You let me do.
Samra, just hold, give me just a second.
I'm giving you just a second.
Proposed Samra, I don't see. I don't see Gail, if Gail gets on, she should have a panelist link. So if I see her in the attendees, I'll, I'll bring her in, but go ahead and start whenever you're ready to.
Okay, I'd like to call the city of Lacey, Lacey Planning Commission. November seventh, meeting to order, roll call. We have a quorum, missing Eddie. I guess still missing Gail.
And Judy.
Judy. And we're gonna take a minute, and Mark has volunteered to read the land acknowledgement.
I'll be glad to, can I ask a question first, where this came from? Now, the purpose behind this?
Yeah, sure, so the, it came from the city council. Basically, it directed staff to come up with this land acknowledgement that acknowledges the relationships that the, the city has with its tribal partners. And acknowledges that the property that the city of Lacey sits on was originally tribal property as well. And so it's kind of an acknowledgement of our relationship with tribal entities and, and cooperation.
Okay, we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek. Including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squoxan Indian Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today, who were absorbed and relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial. And their role today is taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession. Forced removal and abridged treaty rights that are allowed our nation, that allowed our nation, state and city to develop as it has today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you, Mark. And now I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda and consent agenda items.
Some.
Move the second, any discussion? All those in favor? I oppose. Okay. Public comment, any?
Uh, we don't have any members of the public here in City Hall, and I don't see anybody in the attendees list. On Zoom, but just in case, this is your opportunity to address the planning commission, provide any comments you might have. Uh, to do that, use the raise hand function of the webinar, and we'll go ahead and bring you in. Going once, going twice. Nobody here nor on Zoom, so it's safe to say that we can move on in the agenda.
Alrighty, we will move on to commission members' reports, Daphne?
I have nothing.
No report? No report from me, Jeff? Karen?
Yeah, on Saturday, I was at the YWCA's Woman of the Year event. And. We, Dr. Thelma Jackson was presenting, and she was, uh, she provided some information about. Uh, the efforts to remove racial restrictive covenants from people's titles and, and lands. And in partnership with, I think Ole Fed offered free notaries and. As the. County auditor, Mary Hall, reached out to all the people who they could identify as having racial restrictive covenants on their titles. And with all that, only three percent, she said, actually took the steps to. Remove that from the title. And it just seemed like it was something that was a little bit. Um, interesting that, you know, in this, this day and age where we're trying to undo racism. That presented the opportunity, only three percent actually. Uh, took, took up that offer, so I was just wondering if there are continued efforts by the city or the county to try to. Remove the. Something saying that people of color aren't allowed to, whether it's, can be legally enforced or not, um, from those titles and. I just thought that that was really interesting. A little bit depressing to hear.
So legislature did fund for the county auditors to be able to do that and be proactive in that. Courts have ruled for a long time that any of those covenants that are still on a deed are null and void. And there's a lot of people that are a little bit acquiescent. Because they know those covenants are null and void and not legally enforceable, and so they figure. Why bother?
That's probably the reason. I'm naive to this, can you give me an example of what it would, what the title would say that would, would be racist?
Uh, it would prevent anyone who wasn't white from purchasing land. And land here in Lacey, I was. Renting an Airbnb at one of the lakes, and I was surprised to realize that there was a racial restrictive covenant at that.
Good grief.
The, the development of that lake, and so. And, and thinking about Lacey as being a place where people of color, the one place where people of color, not in Tumwater and Olympia had. I don't know, the racial restrictive covenants, I don't know if you called send down our laws, whatever, the people couldn't buy or rent land, so Lacey was. A safe haven, so it's just bizarre just here that it's, they're still on the books here, whether they are legally enforceable or not, I think that's something I would. Strive to correct.
Yeah, shameful.
We've, we've done a wholesale, this, we, the city, the city of Lacey, has done a wholesale review of all of the covenants that we are at least aware of that have been recorded. And there are none that have any racial restrictive covenants within them, so. There are some in our urban growth area, and I, I think, um, or there had been in the past. The, I think largely because Lacey was a relatively new community, a lot of us, a lot of it was developed after the, you know, civil rights movement of the sixties and the fair housing. Movement in the sixties came about, I think, you know, that, those are the things that precluded the ability to put those covenants on. I think since Lacey had been kind of developed after that, that, that those didn't really exist, so it, it, it's mostly, you know, much older developments that are. You know, seventy, eighty, eight hundred years old or more, that you'll see those, uh, the one that I was aware of that was kind of the closest to where we're at is Beachcrest. So if you're aware of where Beachcrest is, out on the water, kind of, uh, I guess that would be east of Jubilee. That, uh, Beachcrest had, had a covenant that they, I believe they struck from there, it was from, actually on the face of their subdivision. And I think that's been, been taken off at this point.
Hey, anything else? I didn't see anybody pop in.
Oh yeah, I think anybody who, any group that has something like that in their covenants or anything else, they should be listed in the newspaper. That, uh, I mean, that, that should be publicized, uh, what organizations have not cleaned those things up. How you could do that?
Anything else? Okay, we will move on to departmental report.
Yeah, so I just have one item, uh, Hans and I, this afternoon, attended the. Thurston County Board of Commissioners' public hearing on the joint plan. So unlike our system here in Lacey where we hold one public hearing, generally one public hearing, maybe sometimes multiple public hearings with planning commission. We, we don't then hold separate public hearings with the city council. The way that Thurston County has been set up over the years is they hold separate public hearings, one for their planning commission and one for their council, so. You all have been involved in the planning commission process, and then, um, now it's, it shifted over to the board of county commissioners, and they take that recommendation and then move it forward for. Uh, public hearing, so that public hearing was today, they're gonna follow up with a work session on it tomorrow afternoon, in case anybody's kind of interested. It may be worth tuning in to see what some of the discussion is, but there was. Okay, the, um, kind of major topics were discussed, the, the three private applicant rezones. The low-density zone consolidation and the urban growth area expansion for Cuyo Park, those were kind of the main themes that the county staff presented. Um, but the majority of the, the comments that were provided were regarding the one rezone application on Silicon Road. If, if those that were maybe in attendance for the planning commission meetings over there, might remember this was the mineral extraction zone that was. Um, to be developed for housing purposes, and there was concerns from the neighbors about neighborhood compatibility and those kinds of things, and. Um, the, at least the suggestion made was that it, it should be zoned moderate density, I, I'm not, I think when we held the public, or when their initial public hearing was held with the planning commission. Or their planning commission, it was to be low density, and somehow along the lines it got. Got recommended or, or suggested it should be moderate density, and so the neighbors in the area became very concerned that it could be. You know, something that was higher density than what their, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods would be consistent with, and so they kind of, they came out and, and were very vocal. They, the county said that they received fifty-five written comments, mostly were about that, that rezone application, and then. You know, if I was going through my list here, probably eighty percent, maybe ninety percent of the comments that were received today were on that rezone application, so. Not a lot of comments, really nothing about the low-density zone consolidation or the urban growth area expansion, or even the joint plan in general. Um, it was really very specific about the, the rezone application, so I think the good news is that. Um, they'll get through, you know, though, to kind of figure out what that property should be rezoned, I think the good news is, is that. That's shifted the focus maybe away from some of the topics that the planning commission had kind of brought up, their planning commission had brought up and kind of. Gotten confused over, confused everybody about, so I think we'll land in a good spot, um, but we'll. Report back after the, the briefing tomorrow, but at least at this point, it looks like there's positive movement to get this adopted. My understanding is the county is set to adopt this on November twenty-eighth.
End of month.
Probably end of the month, to have the joint plan adopted, which will be great, first time we've had a, an adopted or an updated joint plan in twenty years, so finally get through that process.
How many members of the public were there?
Room, there's probably thirty? But, but the line chair was for the rezone application.
Did you guys do like your presentation like you've done previously for the Thurston County Planning Commission, or?
County staff did the presentation, it was a very high-level overview, so nothing like we provided at, you know, any of the previous briefings, just a real high-level. Maybe minute or two kind of summary of the, the document.
Would more have been appropriate, or was less better?
Uh, no, I think, I think that the public that was there understood that this was, you know, they were there for that rezone application, so they, they understood that. The board themselves had already been briefed by the, the staff, including our staff, was that a couple weeks ago?
Oh, good, okay. Briefed them a couple times.
Okay, okay.
Along the way, as far as the process, so the board themselves are pretty familiar with everything that was in it.
Okay.
So it's purely really a opportunity for the public to share their feedback on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? My report.
Great. Nothing else for department reports from anybody else, alrighty. So I'm going to suspend our regular meeting, and I'm going to open the public hearing. For revisions to the Lacey Municipal Code, fourteen point three four flood hazard prevention, and I am going to pass this off to. Samra Seymour.
Great, thanks everyone, good evening. Um, I'm gonna just do a really brief summary tonight, as I don't think we have anyone at City Hall, and I was just there with you guys at our last planning commission meeting. Uh, so I will, uh, be brief. Certainly if we have anyone online, we can, can bring them in, but as a recap, the proposed amendments are mandatory FEMA required updates to LMC fourteen thirty-four. Lacey's flood hazard prevention regulations. The updates are necessary to maintain the city's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Program allows property owners to purchase federally backed flood insurance for property within the floodplain. And as I mentioned before, Lacey does not have, uh, much floodplain area within our jurisdiction, the flood hazard areas that we do have largely lie within other sensitive. Areas that other critical area regulations protect, like wetlands and shorelines. Lacey's flood hazard regulations currently prohibit development within the floodplain. And this has resulted in a negligible value of paid claims over the course of the city's forty-year participation and the NFIP. The proposed amendments really are housekeeping in nature and include updates to definitions, as well as a few new performance standards that would apply. To, uh, any development activity occurring within the floodplain. The purpose of tonight is to hold a public hearing to take public testimony, at the conclusion of the testimony, the PC is requested to make a formal recommendation on these amendments to the city council. The city council being the final decision makers on the amendments to the flood hazard prevention ordinance. I didn't receive any public comments and did not hear from any members of the public, so I'm not anticipating there being lots of comments tonight, but I am certainly available to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there no public?
Yep, so we don't have any members of the public here at City Hall, and there's nobody in the attendees list. Just in case, if there is, this is your opportunity to address the planning commission on the proposed amendments, uh, use that raise hand function. Of the webinar, and we can go ahead and bring you in if you'd like to make public comment. Only once, going twice? Probably close the public hearing and move on. Do the recommendation.
Do their recommendation in the public hearing?
Uh, you could close the public hearing.
Okay.
And then, um, opportunity to discuss and ask questions of Samra if you have any, and then if you're ready, make a motion to recommend this to the city council.
So at this point, we're, we're closing the public hearing. On LMC fourteen point three four. And we will now go back into our regular meeting. And does anybody have any questions?
I do, so my apologies since I wasn't here last meeting, and if you've covered this. But just one sentence in the proposed amendment stood out to me, and I just wondered if you could just provide a brief explanation, but. Lacey's current standards are largely compliant and still exceed the minimum requirements, um, for the flood hazard. Is there any cost to exceeding those requirements? Um, what are the benefits of that, are we maybe doing too much? We could do less, just that sentence struck me, and I just, I don't want you to redo what you did the last meeting that I wasn't here, but that caught my attention.
Sure. No, um, so, kind of what I, when I mentioned earlier about Lacey not having a lot of floodplain in, in, in its jurisdiction. Our floodplain areas are largely, uh, isolated to basically our lakes and some of our, some of our wetlands and our creeks. Excuse me, I'm dealing with some allergies tonight. Um, and Lacey has other critical areas ordinance or regulations, like our wetlands ordinance, our, uh. Our shorelines master program that all kind of happen to overlay with a lot of those, um, a lot of those regulation, a lot of the floodplain areas. And so a lot of those areas, uh, that are covered under, say, wetlands or shorelands have buffers on them that well exceed past our, um, what would be considered the floodplain, because it is so negligible. So a lot of our standards that are currently in other critical areas ordinances exceed the standards, uh, so we don't allow development, basically, the, so. Fourteen thirty-four flat out prohibits new development in the floodplain with very few exceptions for things like utilities that have no other option. And then our wetlands ordinances and our, our wetland ordinance, excuse me, and our flood, or our shorelines master program all have buffers for those areas. That extend well beyond, let's say, what the floodplain area would be, so our critical areas standards already exceed sort of what is required. Um, under our floodplain management, and so what we're being asked to update are. Uh, by, by FEMA and by the Department of Ecology. Are, like, like I said, largely are kind of just making sure that our new definitions are consistent with FEMA's most current standards. Uh, some of performance, uh, performance standards that we have for development, if development were to occur, which. Like I said, in forty years, we haven't had much development at all in the city of Lacey, so, um, they're, they're really. So what we're, what we're updating now really is required by FEMA, there, there isn't really an option unless we don't want to be in compliance with. Or risk being out of compliance with the NFIP.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to, uh, move this forward to the. Whole council, a recommendation.
Second.
Second? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay, move it on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to new business capital facilities plan update. It says Ryan, but I'm getting a feeling.
It's not along some side.
There's a lot of Ryan.
He says reinforcements there.
Yeah, so I'm gonna first introduce, uh, our guests, we have, uh, Justin Knox, uh, Justin, I'm not sure what exactly what your title is, but he's at, Justin's in our public works department, works on our capital projects. And then we have Julie and Beth with Makers, uh, they're consultants that are helping us through updating our, uh, government facilities master plan, which you'll hear all about tonight. As well as updating our full capital facilities plan, uh, the last time we updated this was twenty nineteen, so this was a. Well, substantial two-year effort to, um, kind of bring everything up to date and, um, and modernize our capital facilities plan and really recognize. On the government facilities part, how our city facilities need to grow as we grow as a community, and so they're here tonight to give you a presentation on both of those things. Um, and then, uh, you're, you're able to ask questions, just chime in along the way, happy to provide any additional information. And then what we'll do, if you're comfortable and ready for it, is at the next, uh, meeting, uh, the, hold the public hearing, so like anything, it'll require a public hearing and a recommendation to council. Uh, they'll also kind of go through, this is a, um, very collaborative effort, it's, it's been across multiple departments. Uh, it's involved the city council, I think, three different briefings with the council, so, um, this is a very kind of. You know, fully fledged pro- process and project that you guys are gonna see here tonight, so, um, some of this will be a little bit, you know. Feel free to ask questions and weigh in, but, you know, the planning commission's ability to kind of change course on some of this may be a little limited at this point, so just understand that too, that. A lot of these are kind of council decisions when you get into budgets and stuff like that, so. Um, with that, let me share a screen, so. You can see this on the webinar, and then I'm gonna pass it over to those guys so they can run the presentation.
So just for clarity, Makers is a consulting firm not employed by the city to.
Correct, we are the prime consultant, we actually had a number of consultants on the team, we had an architecture firm, cost estimator. Um, I think those were the main groups that helped with this effort.
That looks a lot like City Hall.
Yes, indeed, it is.
No changes there.
Alright. As Ryan said, um, thanks so much for, for meeting with us tonight, um, this has been an almost two-year effort. Um, the original goals for this, uh, a lot of which, um, are covered with the government facilities plan side of things. But then also we want to make sure that we have, um, a really user-friendly template for the capital facilities plan moving forward. So some of the major goals on the facility side, um, would be to make sure we get a really good grasp of what your, where your facilities are at. What the needs are to meet your operational, um, um, needs in the future. And making sure that we have some great recommendations that help to meet those needs. And then, of course, building support, like Ryan was saying, with all the meetings with folks, department directors, um, city council, we even were at Children's Day. I'm just to kind of spread the word, making sure that this is a really well-vetted and supported, uh, plan. So the government facilities master plan, um, this actually, um, sets the stage, it gets a, a really good plan together. To, like I said, meet those facilities needs, making sure to identify the, um, the priority actions that are needed. And sets an implementation strategy, um, that will help set the city up for the next twenty years in addressing their facilities needs. We also, um, have developed a, uh, the capital facilities plan, these two things we're gonna come with you today. Um, that is, um, we're pretty excited about. But, but of course, as you all know, we're, this is the beginning stages, this whole assessment. Um, it's the beginning stages of seeing the, the end results of all your, uh, facilities projects, we're just assessing the needs right now with, um, much more to come.
Okay, so Beth introduced the two efforts we've been working on, I'm gonna take you through the top line, main findings of the government facilities plan. Um, there's a lot that I'm gonna cover, and I'm gonna, um, pause periodically, so if you have any questions along the way about any of these facilities. Let us know, pipe up. Okay, will you drive for me, if you mind, thank you. Alright, so to your effort, you've heard about it, it's been extensive and collaborative, working with city staff and directors. We had a number of creative workshops, um, and really, um, worked hard to understand what the must, what the needs are today. What they're gonna be as Lacey continues to grow and evolve in twenty years. Um, what the issues are with facilities today, and then how to solve those issues and problems and meet that growth in each of our key focus areas. Um, so we, um, worked with staff, worked with, um, commissioners, worked with, um, directors, and have drafted both documents. So what we focused on seventeen facilities, it's just around two hundred thousand square feet. The main areas of focus were the ones that hadn't been studied before or in recent times. Where there were tremendous needs and pressures, so we focused in four areas, public works, animal services. City Hall, and then parks, culture and recreation, and I'll hit the highlights of each of those main areas now. Public Works, if you haven't been to Lacey's Public Works Center, I highly recommend it. Um, they're doing great work out of that facility, um, and they have some okay buildings in fair condition. But it is, um, very severely undersized, so the main issue with that facility is it's just too small. Um, to support the great work that you rely on those crews getting out there to work on your utilities and your streets and your parks, right? That's a really important facility, you also have a bunch of very high-value fleet that's exposed to weather on that site. And there are some, um, challenges with circulation and with security. There's two other properties we looked at, there's a yard, um, that does have some area that's available for use, but is kind of disorganized and needs, um, some security upgrades. And then you have, um, the Goose Pond property that's owned by the water department, that is the current home for your facilities division, my favorite division, not that I pick favorites, but. So after looking at what we, I feel like was a hundred thousand different options, it's not really true, but there were many, many different solutions that we explored. At the end of the day, we came together and just decided, you know what? Um, this facility can work for the city of Lacey, especially if you invest over time in expanding the land footprint. If you do that, it allows you a lot of flexibility to then reinvest in the facility, um, to redevelop multi-story, so you get more space and more circulation. To save the fleet maintenance shop, that's a decent building that can continue to work for you, and it's very expensive to rebuild. And then you can, um, have a little bit of room for your cupboard parking and your other, um, material storage, et cetera. Um, so over time, um, we think this will work for you to meet your needs, however. Um, if you can't acquire those adjacent properties, we recommend that you eventually relocate Parks Maintenance to Cu- Cuyo Park, I always have trouble saying that. Um, because that will further give them a little bit more room on the site, as well as set Parks Maintenance up with the facilities they need. Funding for this would come from a variety of sources, reserve funds, um, revenue bonds, that would be if council supports, um, supported by rate increases. As well as general obligation bond for the non-ratepayer funds, so like fleet maintenance, um, transportation, there's no rate path to fund that, that part of the project. Any questions on public works? It's a, a very, um, critical need for Lacey, as well as with many of the communities we work with.
So I actually had a number of questions on all of them, and, but I, I'll guess I'll be. Cogged as it is of the fact that it's been vetted and reviewed quite a few times, but. I felt like I didn't see things, I think there are gonna be some of these that are very. employee intense intensive or equipment intensive, that you just simply need the bodies, you need the space, but I didn't see a lot of consideration of work from home. I didn't see a consideration of um greater online services for um the city, you know, uh customers that might come in, and I didn't see some of those things, like outsourcing. I didn't see some of those things that I think private entities are doing that are efficiency and money savings. Didn't see consideration for those things.
Yeah, that's a great point. So I would say on the outsourcing, you're right, that's not part of our scope. And if um the city of Lacey decides to outsource a part of their operation, then they would definitely revisit the facilities' needs related to that. Um but that wasn't our role to come in there and see what would be most cost-effective for the city in terms of contracting. Um we did, however, consider um uh the future of the workplace and um definitely took a look at, especially for administrative functions. Um all um the implications of more uh work from home, of more uh virtual service, of um definitely reducing the the presence of the cut this enormous customer area that has not been used and is very inefficient. Um and then we looked at um um flexible uses of space with uh work-from-home policies that the city may or may not choose um to do in the future. So we did take a look and talk quite a bit about those um that potential and how it could um influence space and how it did influence what we recommend for City Hall. For public works, those folks, there's only a few administrative people that could do those jobs um remotely. So public works is almost all driven by um crews, vehicles, material supplies, all of which need a space to pick up and move out.
I just asked, is it remiss if it's out of your scope? So I get it, if you're gonna have, you know, trucks that sand or things like that, you just have to have it. Or if you're gonna have pets or animals or whatever in animal service, I get you just need space.
Yeah.
But is it remiss that this scope didn't include that? Because we're looking at bonds and revenue and considering improving this for the budget, and while these are ancillary to the to the study, they're really, really relevant as far as whether we're seeking money or buying land or building buildings or carried out. So I'll just leave it at that. I just feel.
So their projections were based on how we had operated as a city in the past and our future growth projections based on, you know, how we'll grow in the future based on those kind of general operating procedures that we've used in the past. And we didn't take a look at, well, what if we did had more contract services, right? What if we contracted first street sweeping or stormwater or those kinds of things? We didn't look at that because that's a a a huge shift in how the city's done operational, you know, over time. And I think um, you know, our kind of our feeling is, is that and I I think, you know, if you were to talk to the current city manager, he'd say the same thing, which is, you know, we have highly trained, highly skilled employees that are really good at their jobs. And um, you know, the the reason that they're here is because they're they're good with their jobs. If we you know, start outsourcing more, that means that we can't, we don't have any quality control. Um, you know, we lack some of the direct connection to the community that our employees provide. These can be employees that, you know, are from around the region. They don't live locally. So it creates a whole kind of snow wall of like, well, what if, what if, what if? And so we, you know, we we didn't ask that question just because if we, in order to do that, we'd have to change how the operation, how the organization has operated in the past. And I think, you know, we are very similar to the other cities in our area, kind of operating the same in the same way. And so we probably have to look at what are some other organizations that have done that around the state, if there's been others. Uh because we don't have really any examples here in Thurston County of anybody that's that's, you know, taken taken that shift and done more contracted services.
I will say, we do have direct experience with organizations that have contracted out some or all of their fleet maintenance. So that is an area that um with for budget. Well, it's not really a budget move, it's a space constraints or an a level of expertise in cities. And I will say that that is very challenging, and most of the clients that we work with are trying to pull that back in-house. Because in a snow and ice event, when in the in the field, when you need the repair, you need it and you have to have priority and you have to be able to count on that happening. Not to mention just the day-to-day maintenance and making sure that your vehicles get returned in, you know, first priority, basically. So mixed review, that that happens to be something that I have experience with. I don't have the experience with um you know, contracting out sweeper services or those kind of things. Okay, let's talk about animal services. So animal services and public works are the two highest priorities and greatest needs for the city of Lacey and for the partnership group that operates your animal services. The facility is far too small. It does not support modern best practices of operations. Um and it is in very, very poor condition with some um fairly near-term uh maintenance uh requirements that are gonna be be needed in order to stay in this facility. Staff also has um concern over security issues uh on that site and its adjacency to the trail um and and uh crime that has occurred there over time. So uh we worked um again as a uh explored a number of options of all kinds. And at the end of the day, bottom line, the recommendation is to, working with those partners, develop and invest in a new animal services um modern shelter. So that's really gonna be the most cost-effective way to get the that facility up to standards and be able to support the mission. Knowing that that is a complex collaboration and that funding will need to come from that board, the recommendation is um to work with them to look for a property to relocate to and then begin the process to design and raise funds to build that facility. If you can't find an appropriate property, then the fallback recommendation is to rebuild on the current site, knowing that that will be um a little bit tricky for phasing, but we think it's doable. We've done some test fits to show that you could, it could happen. And also to improve the security of the site if you stay there.
Our shelter is outside of our city limits, right?
Currently, yes.
And so the partners would be all three cities plus the county?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let's talk about administration and public safety. So this was a really interesting part of the project where we took a look at, you know, this building is kind of a Frankenstein. It was built in three phases. There's three different wings. And several of the wings have had multiple projects and been um modified over time. Um the layout is awkward. The issue at City Hall is actually not that you do not have enough space, especially after police relocates to the new police station. You have enough square footage in this facility and actually not even using the east wing to support your future needs for operations. And much of that is because of modern workplace, shared desks, smaller facilities, hoteling, so and a mod- much more modern and hopefully comfortable um and easier to relate to customer services zone. Um so that was a really fun collaborative process, and we took a look at a bunch of different options. Um the best scenario that would set you up for future in the city of Lacey would actually be to demolish that east wing and build a new um administrative facility for City of Lacey. However, the prices um are high and knowing that this is making it that we can do some cost-effective improvements to the central wing and really gain a lot of ground for the near term, for the next ten years, and then save the resources for public works and animal services where the needs are greater and more acute right now. So that's our recommendation is to um move to, sorry, I jumped ahead. Uh oh. Thank you. Um so as an interim, to renovate the central wing to improve customer service and accommodate growth of the departments that are absolutely out of space, add some meeting rooms, et cetera. Um and then in the long term, um reassess what you're gonna do um to meet your future needs after some of these other major capital investments have been made. For public safety, that was evaluated in a separate process from ours, but we're just incorporating um those recommendations. So Lacey has a one-stop shop that says here's all of our major civic facilities, investments we need. Recommendations there are to build a new police station and then ultimately, hopefully in partnership with other agencies, build a training center. And so those two um recommendations have been incorporated. Any questions on administration or public safety? Okay, last but not least, parks, culture, and rec. Um we looked in this, so this was focused on the senior center and the White House. Senior Center functions well, and it's um really a well-used facility. It's a little too small, and it was always planned to have an uh phase-two renovation, and so our recommendation is to move forward with that plan. The White House has limited programming and is used for storage, so we recommend that that storage be relocated to Goose Pond. And you put a little bit of investment into the basement of that, so you can do a little more interior uh programming for kids or exercise or whatever in that facility. Um the other recommendation for um parks, oh boy, thank you, I'm so sorry. You gotta teach me how to use a mouse. The other um recommendation for parks is um that to um do a study to really understand what the um uh indoor recreation programming needs are for your community that are not being met or cannot be met in partnership with other organizations, Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, that the Parks Department is currently working with. So it's, hey, let's really figure out um what those needs are and what as well as what is a um cost-effective, what's an approach to meet those needs that is um, you know, considers the revenue aspect as well. Building the museum and cultural center is obviously included here as well. That's another one that was um uh outside our process, but that we incorporated, so this is comprehensive. Any questions on parks, culture, and rec? Yeah.
What is the McKinney building used for?
It's not. It's not.
Been wondering about that since I moved here like eleven years ago.
Yeah. It's pretty much um not. I wish there was a good use for it, but there's pretty much not a good use for it. Um it's in poor condition and it's not in a site that is, um you know, the site is very constrained as well.
Well, that was on City Council's plan. We had a trail system that went all the way across the parkway. Money.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So Lacey Community Center, you said the senior center, but there's the community center right next to it, and how is that not part of that?
So the senior center is a facility that has needs, and that's why it was something we studied and um recommended. The community center is in pretty good shape and as is, is kind of just good. So it's not going away, we're just not recommending any major investment because it's doing pretty well. And yeah, I would say that's the.
I think too, initially, we had we had some ideas of maybe using the community center to help fill some indoor space needs, but that's part of the the recommendations coming out of the plan. And so we need to take a wholesale look at those indoor space needs and see where those needs can be met. It it may be that the community center is a part of that, but it it, you know, it originally, there was ideas for the 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 community center to have like basketball courts and those kinds of things, and that may be provided somewhere else in the community through other partnerships. So at this point, it probably will just continue as a a rental space for events and stuff like that for the foreseeable.
Is that predominantly what it is?
Yeah, yep.
Uh another, just a quick question, and this is just like taking a personal perspective, but mu- much of these, you mentioned storage, and quite frankly, has was it within scope or is anybody looking at, are we storing things we just absolutely just need to be thrown in the dumpster? And how much be have we considered? You know, that White House, I know it's not that big, but if it's just filled with storage, like, is that stuff even used or is it just trash? Or, you know, maybe a a giveaway or a auction or something, but
Yeah.
um was that part of anything? Because I bet you a lot of this stuff is just completely valueless.
It's like you are living in my life.
I'm living in my own house and giving away a lot of stuff.
Yep, every every facility we walk through, we have our eyeballs on, hey, is this just here? Cause it's um spaces of that nature pours a vacuum or whatever that, right? If you have this space, you're gonna fill it. And so our job is not to recommend um projects that are expensive to store stuff you don't need. So working with the staff and the directors, we did do a space needs assessment, and we tried to um um imagine things that are surplus going away, more efficient storage for the things that you do need, and then how to um, you know, most effectively use the space you have for those items. Um so, yep, yes, we did um consider a more, um we didn't just um if you have it, we didn't say you're gonna need to keep it. Um we tried to have a good eye to whether it was really needed. There are, however, unfortunately, a number of things that are only used once a year um that have to be kept, like holiday decorations and that kind of stuff. So it's, you know, it is a big need, um but it wasn't just because there was space, we didn't just recommend. Go ahead.
Yeah. On mushroom quarter across from the rec, wasn't there some discussion in the past about an additional sports facility in that corner?
Yeah, so there that still is in the plans. Um so we've called it, it's called the rack phase-three property. It's across from Nisqually Middle School, south from Nisqually Middle School, and and that property has a a known pocket go for population, and so that what is one of the barriers to to development is we're waiting for the county to get through the the habitat conservation project so that we can kind of, you know, we can get that permitted through their their system at Thurston County to mitigate the go-for impacts there. Uh now that that's been completed, then that will help kind of speed along some potential future um development that's been pitched for maybe a a partnership between the city and St. Mark's for a baseball field. That's one of the ideas, maybe some additional soccer fields. So that's space yet to be fully programmed out, but it is owned by the city and will be used, that the plans are at this point to be used for future park expansion.
Now, Mark, you do, uh, that's not the mushrooms. He's not talking about the mushrooms.
I'm not talking about the Ostrom site. I'm talking about.
Okay. Yeah, I thought there was gonna be some sort of an indoor in indoor uh sports facility that was thought about for that area. Um and I'm not sure if that would eventually become part of the capital um pro- program.
Yes, so that is what you're referring to is uh there's another project that is on the um former Bucknell Fields site um about adjacent to Nisqually Middle School. That is a potential partnership between the city um and North Thurston Public Schools to do like maybe a an indoor swimming pool and and childcare facility and all that kind of stuff. That's very much in the early planning stages at at this point, but is a it's a possibility at this point. It's not something that we're projecting on our capital facilities plan yet, but it's it's in discussions and part of the overall scheme to address the and try to get more indoor recreation in the community.
I thought I'd seen some drawings on that, maybe a couple of years ago. They were showing us, you brought through something and we had a chance to look at it. Uh but, yeah, I I think that'd be a wonderful addition to, you know, I mean, the rack is such a tremendous facility. And uh, you know, we had something that served other sports ne- nearby uh with easy access on and off five. I mean, we could get, it could be used as a regional uh opportunity for other sports, uh gymnastics to to basketball, to anything else, I think, indoor sports.
There there had also been plans at one point for a pro- a project um on the Nisqually property, and that maybe is something too that we we brought in the past. Um a partnership opportunity for um, you know, around Cabela's area. So those are all kind of continuing discussions. Those projects are huge amounts of money and they they don't generate the revenue to pay for themselves, so they're a kind of a net deficit, you know, so they're um I I would imagine that, you know, we'll see one, you know, probably in the next ten to twenty years, but it's gonna take a significant more you know, amount of resources and time and effort to get those things on board.
I don't think it's been called Bucknell in a while.
Yeah.
Kind of dated itself with that one.
Yeah.
Like at least a decade.
So the senior center. I remember when we did the expansion on that. Oh, it stayed at your, yeah, it's just what we need. Anyway. Was any analysis given to no offense here, the shrinking population that is gonna utilize that facility? Because we baby boomers are slowly diminishing our existence. And then you've got a while before the next large generation that comes up, which is Gen Z, is going to be here, that's gonna have need for that.
Yeah. That's a great question. That's a great question. I would say, so we did not look in depth at the senior center. We, that facility, we, this plan assumes given the use of the existing building and given, you know, it's very well-used and the existing plans already in place. It's just completing the strategy that was already developed. So it wasn't, there wasn't an effort to sort of go back to the drawing board and reassess demand. It was just kind of, let's just do what we set out to do and there's no indication in terms of use of the current facility that that wouldn't be needed and used.
Yeah, and I, you know, so it's one of two senior centers in all of Thurston County, which is over three hundred thousand people. And this is what, ten thousand square feet? So, you know, all the trend lines are showing that, you know, the use of the senior center keeps going up and up and up. So, you know, at this point, it would be, it would be difficult to plan for a declining older population not using those facilities anymore because it's either between this one or the one in downtown Olympia. So they serve large populations. Somewhere does not have a senior center.
In your scheme of the improvements and the recommendations that we're making, this is a relatively small addition is what we're talking about. It's not doubling the size or anything like that. So it's a, it's a small project that is gonna help out there. Okay, so those were the wrap-ups of recommendations and all those key focus areas. But we don't wanna forget about maintenance. So part of the reason that some of these facilities are in the shape they're in is because the city of Lacey, like many cities, you're not alone, but has been underfunding maintaining its facilities over time. So we recommend it's kind of a big gap in terms of industry standards and where you all are at. And so we know that that's too far to get to immediately. And so we recommend a plan to increase spending for maintenance in five-year increments. So basically, from a budgetary perspective, let's try to plan for some increased maintenance, especially as you're adding square footage that, that you can roll in over time. And so it's not too big a hit at once, but it's gradually catching up to that where you need to be to maintain these facilities. Okay, so we did wanna show you the spending plan for this investment. This chart shows the about a hundred and eighty million of investment that we are recommending to address facility issues and be able to continue to meet your community's needs into the future. As you can see, so the way this works is, let's see, I can't move that off. But that light blue solid color means police investment. Where there are grants or partnerships coming into play, those are the hatch or the checkbox. So you can see there's a, a, a significant investment in the first few years related to police, which has pretty much already been approved and underway by council, as well as animal services, which we believe is your highest, most critical near-term priority. So that will be done in partnership, but we estimate that Lacey's contribution will be approximately twenty-one percent. That is your contribution to the partnership historically and currently. And so we assume that Lacey will continue to contribute that portion into the new investment. The yellow is where you'd wanna do your interim city hall investments. So it's not, that's a relatively small project in the grand scheme of things that you'll get great benefit for and will take you through the next decade. And then you can see where the more significant investment in your public works facility starts to hit. So sort of in that middle, starting in twenty twenty-eight and extending all the way out to twenty thirty-four. So you do that project in phases. And that will help manage the construction and operations that you're gonna need to manage on that site as well. Any questions or thoughts about that? The one that's far out is the training center and that one is not necessarily, we don't recommend that you wait that long. That's just to indicate, hey, you need partner, you need partners and you need funding in order to do that facility. Anytime that comes together, go for it. But just on our chart, we put it at the end of the period. Okay, so near term, here is what you can anticipate would come from implementing this plan. So number one, hopefully the council will adopt this facility's master plan before the end of the year. Second priority is in property acquisition. This is the biggest lesson learned and the biggest mistake I see working with cities and counties all over the Western US is cities have trouble moving fast enough to respond to real estate opportunities when they arise. You need property for animal services in partnership if you're gonna relocate that facility. And then you need to expand your public works facility. The investment in the land is relatively miniscule compared to the investment in the buildings. It really behooves Lacey to get ready to be able to move and make that happen as soon as you can. You'd also be working on design of critical phase one projects, animal services, interim updates for city hall and that first major move on public works, which is the multi-story crew building. And then city council has got a big work item to consider in terms of how to pay for this investment. So I know it's one of the topics that will be focused on in their early year retreat. So they'll need to think about the reserves that they are willing to apply to government facilities. They need to think about creative funding for parks and, you know, is there other funding sources that might come? Grant funding for emergency operations center to build that out in the police station. That is, funding needs to be acquired. And then they need to think about incorporating support for this into the utility rate payer studies that are gonna come in. So those are like twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-nine is when each of the utilities rate studies will be updated. Finally, we hope they incorporate that stepped increase of facilities maintenance into budgeting so that you can continue to steward these assets and take care of these facilities. We believe this will provide a lot of benefits for Lacey. It is a big amount of money, but it does address decades of underinvestment. So it's really about catching up and getting to a point where your facilities can serve Lacey into the future. It'll take care of police, public works, animal services and the museum. It improves city hall. It'll buy you ten years in this facility and it'll expand the senior center and serve your community into the future. That was a lot of detail. We've been working hard on this government facilities plan for you. Are there any final questions before Beth and Brian give you a brief update on the capital facilities plan part?
Well, I know you are all familiar with the capital facilities plan and the fact that it's really based in the GMA requirements. So we have redeveloped a brand new template that is not in Word perfect anymore. It's something that's easily used by the staff and it follows pretty much the same organization that your current CFP has. Starts off with the introduction that kind of explains why this capital facilities plan is needed. And then it walks through each functional category. I'm starting out with the government facilities, which is based on the government facilities plan that Julie just went over. And then all the rest of the functional categories really just tie back to the individual master plans that have been created by all those different divisions. Each section begins by going over the major goals and policies that have really helped to shape each one of their master plans, cover some of those significant issues that are going to be addressed with the investments. And then really hones in on those near-term investments that are needed. Then we, we also, in the beginning, we wrap up all of the six-year expenditures. This is all of the different funding facility categories. And then within each of the actual functional categories, we have the wrap-up and all the details of the actual projects that are anticipated in the six-year timeframe. So for each of those categories, each project actually walks through any funding that has been in prior years. If every single year for the next six years and any anticipated future funding that's going to be needed. It also makes sure to help the public understand where this project is going to be located. Get some details about what the project is about and it also gives some justification about why this project is needed. So this is, it's a walkthrough for each of the individual projects that are being suggested. And Brian has more detail.
Do you wanna maybe start sharing the screen? Joined us tonight. I wanted to go quickly through some of the, kind of the highlights of some of the projects that are coming soon. Just, we've talked a lot about general government projects tonight, but those that are, I kind of picked out one or two from each section that are, are coming soon. So the first section, which you've already heard a lot tonight about is the general government section. So two high priority projects for the city. First of all, number one, obviously the police station. Going to open the bids next couple of weeks, seventeenth of November. So about ten days from opening the bids on the police station and then probably under construction right after the first of the year, give or take. So coming soon on the, on the police station. So you can see on the, in the CFP, it's about a sixty-one million dollar project. Significant, you know, capital investment, probably biggest one we've done since, well, probably in terms of dollar amount, the biggest one the city's ever done in terms of a building. The second one is animal services. So that's a roughly twenty-four million dollar project with the kind of estimates broken down by year to, to start in, in twenty-four. So look as, as Julian Bess said, you know, starting with looking at obtaining property and moving forward and design on, on new facility for animal services. Moving on to the parks section, so I think the planning commission is aware that the Gray Couyo Park Phase One will be under construction relatively soon. So that's about a six million dollar project. Most of the construction, well, all the construction will happen within the next year. So there's been some preliminary design and, and those kinds of things. Or not preliminary design, but design done and then the moving towards construction in the next year. Transportation aside, a couple of projects that I thought were worth mentioning. The first one is a new roundabout to be constructed at Britton Parkway and Carpenter Road Northeast. So you may be aware, Britton Parkway and Carpenter Road meet at an offset intersection that is not easy to be able to turn in and out of. So there'll be a roundabout constructed in twenty twenty-four for that. And then College Street Northeast. So College Street, as you leave city hall and go across Martin Way northbound, will actually extend all the way to Fifteenth Avenue Northeast. And that's a project that for my entire career, I think, has been on the, the transportation improvement program. And it's finally, in, in twenty twenty-five, that's about a four and a half million dollar project to be constructed in, in twenty twenty-five. So that'll help improve some connectivity in, in that area. Yeah, yeah. Lots of complaints lately from the neighborhood. If you've been through there recently, we've put in some speed humps to try to address some of the speeding concerns through the, that neighborhood's called Livingston. They would appreciate. On the wastewater side, on the sewer part, one project coming up next year is installing sewer in the Tomy Park neighborhood, which is, it's north of I-5, west of Marvin Road, near Thirty-second Avenue. It's a, an area of failing septic. They're on a community septic system and they've been notified for some time that their system is failing and the city is coming in and, and installing sewer. That's being done through a utility local increment district. So that's being paid for through a ULID. Stormwater, you'll notice, and Beth had a slide, I think, that showed the, the stormwater is relatively low compared to all the other capital projects. I think in the next six years, they have about, I think, eight million dollars, which project, worth of projects, which is much lower than, than anybody else. The one I could find to point to was Twenty-Sixth Loop down at the end of Golf Club Road to do some conveyance, some stormwater conveyance, north of Chambers Lake to address some of the flooding concerns down in that area. So I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, we have Doug here quite often to talk about stormwater. Doug manages our capital projects is that we have the, kind of the blessing of being a newer community. So we don't have too many significant deficits in terms of our, our stormwater facility. So not too many capital projects on the, on the.
When I was on city council, we opened a new stormwater facility down there around Twenty-Sixth Loop. So is this expanding that?
No, this is conveyance. So this is only putting in new pipes and those kinds of things in the, I think, in the road to, to convey stormwater away from certain areas to others. So I think yeah, it says title it all flows from Chambers Lake Drive Golf Club Road and Twenty-Sixth Avenue to a connection with the Chambers Lake S-M, SDMH. So it must be to titeline more flows to actually put into that facility. They're looking for somebody to blame. And then on the water side, Terry Cargill reservoir. So this is a roughly ten million dollar project down in Lacey Corporate Center by, this would be by kind of the Lowe's down Yum Highway and, and College Street. This is constructing a one point two five million gallon elevated water reservoir. We've already, I've begun construction on that and it will be finished up here in twenty twenty-four. Yeah, yep. So those were the high, high points, the ones that I could find that planning commission. If there's others, you have a hundred and something pages of projects there. Be Justin's here too. Hopefully we could, between the two of us, answer any questions you may have on any of those projects. Just so you know, this is still in a draft form. We're working on a couple improvements to the draft of the capital facilities plan overall, which is to add some maps. So people can kind of gauge where these projects are located. You know, it helps kind of break up that laundry list of projects as well as add some photos. So not only some project-specific photos, but some that are kind of examples of what those kinds of projects would look like. So for example, maybe I'll, you know, a picture of the Terry Cargill reservoir is an example. But then also if we are doing a lift station replacement project, we've got a picture of a lift station. So it kind of gives context to people what we're doing. So with that, I know you guys have maybe one more slide. Are you able to?
We do. It was just steps to completion. I think the. We can just look clueless at it. I could just talk through it though, but basically we're on the home stretch here. And so we will make any updates. There'll be a planning commission hearing in December and then hopefully council adoption before the end of the year.
And, and I really appreciate this timeline that they've provided, which is showing the, you know, the amount of input along the way. This has really been, like mentioned at the offset, a really collaborative project that's included the, you know, the different departments, the department directors and council along the way. So, you know, substantial two-year effort to get to this point. So we thank Beth and Julie a lot for their help along the way. And this is great for the city to have this as a resource and, and it's been a long time coming and something that's kind of bringing us up to a more modern city and, and, you know, recognizing, you know, that we, our facilities need to grow with, with our community, which we haven't frankly done a very good job of in the past. So.
So are you saying that we're gonna see this on, as a, probably carrying on the dip?
That's what I'm saying. Yep. Any other questions? Of, no. Nope. So the, yep, the next meeting is gonna be the first Tuesday in December and that'll be our last meeting of the year.
And what else is?
December fifth.
So it's my last meeting?
So we don't have one two weeks from now?
That's correct. Right before Thanksgiving, we're not gonna meet.
Okay, alright.
Okay, any questions you wanna throw at anybody? You wanna absorb?
Well, thank you.
He did get his validated time though, so that's, he got the priorities there, so.
Guys, have a good night.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to our special guest Hans in person today. About, about the neighborhood commercial and amendments. And I'm assuming he's stuck.
Share screen. Share screen, let's go down to Zoom.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
All right.
Is this anywhere in here? If I missed it in the two hundred and two pages, I had to look through. Was it in here?
No, this is new content.
Okay.
Blurry content for some reason. Not sure why that is. Oh, hey, there we go. Okay, we'll just skip that slide. So this is just a little bit of a recap. It's our project timeline. And really kind of gets at where we are today. So we started at the the end of last year, beginning of this year, kind of doing a pretty broad scale outreach, really focusing on open-ended questions. Really, the emphasis there was really just to find out from the community what their expectations are for these districts. So we weren't really trying to provide any leading questions, anything like that. It was really as free form as possible, just really get as much kind of perspective and capture that. And then since then, kind of moving on down the line, each stage has kind of been a kind of a focusing of that information into kind of more detailed questions and more site-specific content that we're really trying to evolve into what will ultimately be an update to the code with specific code amendments and text changes and recommendations across the board. So as far as where we're at today, we're somewhere between, oh, really kind of in that starting really draft code content. So we've had all the feedback, we've really distilled it down. And now based on that, we're going to be in that kind of actually writing code portion of this update process. As a quick recap, just because we're talking about it, right now there are eight different neighborhood commercial districts within the city of Lacey. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this, but they're pretty evenly distributed distributed across the community, really kind of on the periphery to fill some of those gaps that are other commercial districts really don't provide services to. Is there a way to move? That's going to be right in the way of.
I think you can. If you go up top, like, yeah, you should be able to.
Move it to the middle so it's even.
We'll just put it right here. I imagine I'm going to be moving that around throughout this evening. But yeah, I did want to start before we get into neighborhood commercial district specific content that really all of our different districts or zones are need to be consistent with design, with our design chapter, and that's fourteen twenty three. And it has a whole different range of different types of design elements. So that's residential, it's commercial and everything in between. But the ones that I wanted to highlight within that chapter that are kind of really specifically neighborhood commercial or specific to neighborhood commercial districts are multifamily projects, especially as that conversation evolves as far as how much residential is really appropriate within these districts. Commercial design, it's a commercial district, public transportation and pedestrian circulation. So really kind of how folks interact with these sites when they're not accessing it via vehicles or single occupancy vehicles more specifically. And then the last one is in line with the intent of this district, and that's really just the pedestrian emphasis and really kind of how to really make that forward in the design when these districts are being developed. And then also just at a high level, stormwater environmental performance standards, off-street parking and loading, landscaping. These are all things that all of our districts have to be in line with. They're equally true within neighborhood commercial districts. So the code that we include within our neighborhood commercial districts is really in addition to all of these existing standards that all of our different codes need to remain in alignment with. And this is just kind of a graphic that I found that I think is helpful when we're kind of talking about these things. So it has to do with things like building setbacks, height setbacks from other different types of uses. So commercial next to residential, frontage, how much window coverage there is on the ground floor, what that mix is, all different types of things that those codes or design elements that we were just talking about really work to address. And then also the neighborhood commercial districts kind of take it a step further in specifically for commercial districts or neighborhood commercial districts. So it's kind of a cumulative thing, if you will. But moving into actually what's in our code today, so talking about site coverage, it's really kind of two different categories within there. There's the full or max development coverage and then there's max building coverage. So development coverage is your buildings plus your drivelanes, plus your parking, plus other hard surfaces, really. And then the building coverage is the actual physical building itself. So right now we have within our code seventy percent development coverage and fifty percent building coverage. So that's kind of close to that fifty percent icon or graphic there as far as a building. And then it would be a little bit more than three of those blue squares to give you kind of an idea within these districts, the the general development coverage, if you will. By comparison, within our development coverage category, that seventy percent is actually less than both our moderate and our high-density residential districts. Our moderate residential district is actually at seventy five and our high density is at eighty five by comparison. So it's currently it slots in somewhere between our moderate and our low density as far as development coverage.
So I could just to to help bring that around, that could be a very kind of suburban development type, right? It's kind of what it what that's getting at is a low-density kind of standard of of development for a for a commercial area where you're trying to inject more, you know, vitality and vibrancy into by creating more uses, more buildings, those kinds of things. Here we're all we're saying on the development code side, we still want, you know, a suburban style development, so.
And one thing I will note here is that based on, so one of the things that we did when we went up to the community is ask for example districts. And we looked, kind of summarized those, looked at the top list of example districts. And one of the things we found is that comparatively, this is actually a little bit lower than a lot of the example districts that the community kind of identified as what their ideal version of a neighborhood commercial district could look like. So, yeah, there's about ten percent of additional space that would actually land it right between moderate and high density that seems to be kind of that sweet spot in other districts and also we heard from the community. And then that meshes well with that twenty percent open space requirement, depending on the types of uses that take place on there, kind of adding up to a hundred, if you will. And then on the building coverage front, currently we're at fifty percent as what the code says. And then again, looking at those example districts based on kind of the top choices. I included this as kind of one route that one of the districts went, but the fifty percent again is on the low end compared to a lot of those other districts that folks were identifying as kind of what they're looking for as far as the fit and the feel of these zones and kind of what that experience should feel like essentially. So I included this one as an example. Typically, the thing that's not the building is your parking lot. So this was a way to actually potentially reduce the amount of surface parking and create more of a dynamic interactive space. So it was an interesting one that I thought would be, were thrown in there just as kind of a thought exercise. But, yeah, we're at fifty. There is an opportunity to go all the way up to around seventy five even. That seemed to be kind of more, again, that range of those example districts. So we're quite low compared to a lot of the example districts that folks identified. So it's looking like this, but it kind of a lot of the example districts are more in this range as far as what that coverage is like. So again, these are commercial zones. They are intended to be a little bit more kind of higher activity, if you will. And then, so the rest of this, I just pulled together kind of some aerial views of our districts as they are today, based on our code as it's written today and did a breakdown of, so based, so there's our code, which is kind of what our standard is. But then there's in practice, whether we actually accomplishing within these districts. So this is our Thornberry Crossing and approximately thirty percent, and this is half of it, to the north of this is the gas station. So this is on the corner of Yelm Highway and.
Ruddle Road.
Ruddle Road.
Well, it's a little Cutter's Point there, right there.
Yeah, let me see if I can get my arrow. So Cutter's Point is here. Sorry, I think there's a subway on Cutter's Point somewhere in here.
Yeah, yeah.
And then these are a range of multiple different tenants in each one of these. So, yeah, the building coverage is about thirty percent. The lot coverage is about eighty percent. So that's hard surfaces, impervious surfaces. And it's really a blend of single-story surface buildings and parking lots is really kind of what that is. And this is just a street view of what that is for reference. We did it again with the farm, which is on Marvin?
No, College Street.
Mullen.
College.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Mullen and College. And again, we're looking at about twenty five percent. So building coverage is about twenty five percent of this lot and then the lot itself has around seventy percent impervious surfaces. So there's a little bit more green space going on here, but again, it's the the character is building and parking lot. It's kind of what we're getting there.
These are both neighborhood commercial zones?
Yep. So those are two of our current neighborhood commercial zones. This next one is actually the Briggs Tap House, which was one of the top locations identified within the surveys that we did as far as example districts that folks liked, that they want to see our districts more modeled after, if you will. So again, so we are seeing that building percent climb a bit. So we're seeing actually forty percent for this one and then eighty percent coverage. But there is a little bit more kind of public space. There's some more outdoor seating. It's a little bit more interactive. There's a little bit more kind of give and play from the sidewalk into these businesses. So it's it's there's more pull, if you will. Again, this is still surface parking, but you also see some street parking as well there. So that some of that required parking that's normally takes place within the lot is actually being addressed adjacent to it. So it allows for more space being allocated towards non-parking uses.
There's a lot more street parking there than the other two.
For sure. Yeah, the others don't have any.
Yeah.
By by comparison. And we did look at those locations while street parking would, we actually looked at all of our neighborhood commercial districts and while street parking would be great and something we want to encourage. The current locations are not really well set up currently to accommodate it. So that might be looking at road widths in future or if there are future locations, figuring out how we can look that in. I think we actually in Lacey, we have very limited amounts of on-street parking. I think Sixth Street is our primary example. But outside of that, there's not a whole lot. And then I did want to throw this one in. This is Capital Steps. It's on East Side, I think. Again, this is in Olympia, but this is an example of a residential building that is still kind of matches our size requirements, if you will. But it has below-street, or sorry, below-grade parking, if you will. So it's a much larger coverage of the entire lot. It's about seventy percent building coverage and then eighty percent lot coverage. So it still has some green spaces and kind of public gathering spaces. But it's an example of kind of the other end of the spectrum of what that just looks like for a frame of reference. And then, so from a building size perspective, our code really has two different standards. It's either for a single use, which is ten thousand square feet, or it's a combination of uses and that's forty thousand square feet. We did just talk about the coverage a little bit and the both of the building and the development, so I'm not going to go into those. And then later we might hit on hate here. But the next two that I wanted to focus on are either a single use or multi-use and just the general size of what that can look like. And what we heard from the community when we went out and kind of asked these questions is that we want to be a little more granular with our types of uses. We want to be a little bit more use-specific in our design codes. Instead of just either you're a single use or you're a multi-use, getting a little bit more specific, both with what that means in practice as far as types of uses and then also what the design standards are associated with those uses. So going from two, we actually expanded it to started looking more at single uses still, but then also mixed commercial uses, mixed residential uses, multi uses, so commercial and residential, then grocery store. Because we wanted to actually look at that and get an idea of what a grocery store is compared to as far as these sizes. Because that was repeated throughout that folks were really excited about grocery stores and that's something that's currently missing in some of these locations. So making a set of kind of design standards that really accommodated grocery store in these zones should that ever take place. So again, these are, these are just some example locations that I've pulled off of Google Maps, if you will. I grabbed their general square footage just so we can kind of get a sense of what really what that looks like. I hopefully most of these are somewhat familiar to folks. This one up here is actually a preschool and that's right around that ten thousand square feet mark. That's gross floor. So it is a single story, but it is a gross floor area. So that's kind of what a ten thousand, ten thousand square foot building looks like. Comparatively, this is the Starbucks that used to be the old Grange Hall on Yelm Highway. That's around that five thousand square foot mark. This is the San Francisco Street Bakery. That was another location that was identified as kind of a ideal example of what these neighborhood districts could be. Again, that's right around that five thousand square foot mark. And then this is the Mud Bay Animal Feed. And actually, there's a grooming store on this side, but that total size. Aaron, I think you're hiding it. There it is. Around that five thousand mark again. So the reason I showed these two kind of in contrast with each other is that a lot of the types of uses that were actually identified by the community as far as what they, the types of uses they want to see in these districts are quite often a lot closer to that five thousand mark than what we allow currently for a single use. And that includes so things like restaurants, things like bookstores, animal, veterinary, other kind of.
Gas stations.
Gas stations, all quite frequently as single, single standing individual buildings are much smaller in scale than what our code currently accommodates for a single use, which is that ten thousand square feet. Moving on, so looking at multi-commercial, right now we allow forty thousand square feet within our districts. And just to give you a frame of reference of what a forty thousand square foot building looks like through great floors up here, given it's, you know, a little bit bigger than forty thousand, but in my mind, that's not really the the scale of a building
Feel, no.
Looking for in these districts. So I did want to throw that one up there and then a couple of comparison locations. So the farm, I think we looked at that a little bit earlier, but that's in that seven thousand square foot range. And there's, I think, eight or nine different commercial tenants in there. There's the Biggs Wildwood Pizzeria kind of complex, which was another one that was identified. And that's close to that six thousand square feet. I think that there's four or five different tenants in there by comparison. And then there's the Briggs Tap House again that we were talking about earlier. That one is two stories. So that's where that coverage stays the same a little bit, but the total gross floor area is increases. So we do allow currently up to three stories within these zones. So just because of the footprint as one size doesn't mean that the total square footage can't be larger, but there's different ways of accomplishing that total floor area, if you will. Some that are more in line with the intent of these districts than others. And then some of the feedback here, so smaller building, people-oriented spaces is kind of the the theme that we see throughout as far as public comment. So more in line with these style than what our code currently maybe accommodates at that forty thousand foot scale. And then we also wanted to look at a couple of supermarkets. Across the board, the consistent feedback was people are pretty much willing to do anything to get a grocery store. We took a couple of examples were identified as specific types of grocery stores that folks would like to see in these zones. The largest being Ralph's Thirsty here, and that's actually around thirty two thousand square feet. So that's even still lower than that largest size building that we allow. And given there are, I think that there's a pharmacy, there's a subway, there's a coffee shop in there. So even it would qualify as a multi-commercial mixed-use kind of site. So the grocery store itself is even smaller than that by comparison. Spuds was also one that was very frequently referenced. That's right around that nine thousand square feet. And then this one is up in the Proctor District. I'm blanking on the name of it, but it was another grocery store that was frequently identified as the type of grocery store that the community would like in these kind of more neighborhood scale.
Met Market.
Yeah, that's the one. And that's at that twenty seven thousand square foot. So currently, anything that's multi-use within our districts is at that forty thousand square feet. A single use would be at that ten thousand square feet. So that's why I did want to break out supermarkets separately because they don't necessarily conform to either of those, but they are a popular item that folks are looking for. So finding maybe its own category or set of codes that really kind of address grocery stores and are a little bit more accommodating than maybe a single building, but also have some restrictions that we're not looking for necessarily a Fred Meyer or Safeway scale type of development. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of what those look like there. And then this one we added, so this is multifamily. One of the questions that we did ask is the community's stance on ground floor residential. Currently, residential is only allowed above ground floor, so above commercial uses in mixed-use style developments. So. So there's two questions here. If we allow residential on the ground floor, then there's potential for purely residential buildings within these districts, which we currently don't really have any code that addresses. Everything is in the context of it being in a mixed-use above commercial setting. So if we do accommodate ground floor or residential, which seems like a generally popular option. There wasn't a whole lot of pushback on it. It seems in line with a lot of folks are looking for. We have the added bonus that it really helps support primary uses. So one of the challenges that we were encountering in some of these districts is that there's not enough doors immediately in the vicinity of these commercial districts to really support the types of uses that folks are looking for. So this is a way to really add additional residential units in close proximity to these districts that would effectively support and stimulate that type of commercial development. So based on our code definition, if we're treating single-family or multifamily developments as a single use, being residential, they have would have a max of around ten thousand or ten thousand square feet. So with that in mind, I did want to kind of pull up a couple of examples in the area of what residential typically three-story buildings, since that's what's currently allowed within our districts, look like. So this is Serenity Apartments here, and I did cheat a little bit because these are live-work ones down here. So we'll talk about that that in a second. But the coverage, so the ground floor coverage is right around eight thousand square feet. But the total being a three-story building is right around twenty thousand square feet by comparison. So the the ground floor is still smaller than this as far as footprint goes, but it is much larger. Not nearly to the point of that forty thousand, but somewhere in the middle. So that kind of leads to the conversation that maybe residential multifamily unit should have their own designation. That's kind of in that middle range, if you will. Here's another example. This is down off of State in Olympia. The footprint of it is actually pretty small. And then this is actually a three-story, three-story units that add up to right around that ten thousand square foot mark. So within our current code, this is kind of the scale that would be possible currently based on how it's written without creating a residential designation. And then this one is the Tilden Apartments. I think that you guys were introduced to this one, at least through the bus tour, for those of you that were on it. Again, the footprint of this one is right around that ten thousand mark. But in total, there's three stories on this one, so that would be right around that thirty thousand. So it's it's kind of contrasting whether or not we want the 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 footprint of these buildings to be that size or if we want the total floor area, so each floor combined to really kind of equate to what we're working with here. And then I threw this one in. We we did talk about that one earlier. That was the one that had about seventy-five percent coverage on the lot. That one's again, the Olympia area, I think on East Side Street. The coverage is actually pretty similar to Serenity Apartments. And then the the size as well. So those are two different examples of what that style of building could look like.
Did you get much feedback about the whole height thing, which seemed to be an issue for different groups about, because they look, they seem overbearing and look into their yards?
We did receive some of the feedback. And so currently, right now, within our neighborhood commercial districts, it's we're allowed up to three stories. There's not actually a height designation attached to that. It's just, wait, no, sorry, I'm saying that backward. Thirty-five feet is the limit on buildings within our neighborhood commercial districts. And when those are directly adjacent to single-family uses, there are additional setbacks that are required because of that. And that gets back to our design review and just where these location, these commercial districts are being cited next to residential uses. There's additional vegetation requirements, site buffering setbacks and things like that that further kind of lessen that direct that that line, if you will, for adjacent uses. So the feedback that we received here is that they help support primary uses. That creates kind of an extended active period of time where people are in these districts and kind of engaging with the community. And they also have the potential of offering kind of an additional buffer from the commercial components of the neighborhood commercial district and residential districts that are directly around the commercial districts. So that's kind of the feedback that we got there. This next one is the mixed use and it's looking at mixed use specifically commercial residential mixed use instead of just multi-commercial or multi-residential. And this is where we get into that forty thousand square foot feet based on our code today. And then I just pulled together a range of example, kind of mixed-use buildings that all the way from kind of that that forty thousand square foot scale, all the way down to some of the examples that we have in Lacey right now. So this one is downtown in Olympia, next to the Pet Works, I believe it's called. It's a newer building that was just built there. I added that one because the the coverage is right around ten thousand square feet. But the totals gross floor area of it is right around that forty thousand square feet. So that's consistent with currently what our neighborhood commercial, as it's currently written, would accommodate. And that might be larger than what a lot of the feedback is that we've received so far.
It's probably higher than thirty-five feet, isn't it? Isn't that four stories?
Yep, yeah, so it is four stories with commercial on the bottom and then residential on the top three, I believe. So, yeah, it's it's hard to find buildings that are of forty thousand square feet.
I'm just for perspective.
Yeah, no, you're totally right.
I'm not judging your selection, sorry. I'm just for perspective.
This one here is on Sixth Street, so not too far away from where we are. This is or was, I should say, and he's a bistro in here. I don't believe that they're in operation anymore. And I did cheat a little bit because the back half of this building continues. But the front kind of section that you see and you interact with as you're driving down the the road, the coverage, so the footprint is right around ten thousand square feet. And then the total being a three-story building is right around that thirty square foot mark. And I will note that the commercial comes all the way up to the sidewalk. And then actually, there's a little bit of a setback when you get to the residential. So kind of getting to your question about kind of that privacy of adjacent uses. There's definitely code that we've used specifically within our, I think, high-density residential and our commercial that kind of stipulate when a setback is necessary. Right now, I think it's actually four stories or higher is typically when that setback kicks in within other districts within our code. But as an example, this is kind of what that looks like in practice.
And there was that where the windows at a certain height have to be. I'm not sure what the term is.
Yeah, opaque.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in our high-density code where we exceed, we go up to like eighty feet, I think, in that. And so once you get above like the thirty-five foot level, you have to have, you know, balconies with obscured glass.
Yeah. And neighborhood commercial districts really are unique that they are threaded right between. They are, they bridge that commercial and that residential and not many of our other really districts do that. So we do have the opportunity to pull from a lot of our other districts that kind of address these topics. And then, so we already talked about Serenity. This time, they do have the live-work studios down along the the ground floor there. So that's right around the eight thousand square feet, total of around twenty thousand. And then this building here is, this is Row downtown in Olympia. That's actually a much smaller square footage footprint, if you will, but still a larger kind of total gross floor area once you add in the additional floors. So all different examples of mixed-use commercial and residential and what they can kind of look like. And again, kind of some of the messaging that we got is that it supports the primary use of businesses. And then it also activates and buffers neighboring uses. So all of these things are kind of accomplished in this type of development. And then, so using all of the guidance that we kind of received in that feedback and looking at, generally speaking, when we're looking at a single use or we're looking at a multi-use, when we're looking at a residential building or a multifamily kind of building, these are some of the kind of common themes or common scales that we found in other example districts. So it's not necessarily by any means our recommendation, but just as a frame of reference, it does deviate from our current code, but it is a little bit more granular and responsive to these types of uses that we kind of broke out and looked at. So a single commercial use, specifically commercial, is around that six thousand square feet. Seems to be a pretty common size for the gross floor area. So that's going to be your restaurant, your post office, your bookstore, things like that. They're not large buildings on their own. We did want to break out grocery stores, thirty-five thousand square feet. And that accommodates something up to the scale of Ralph's Thirstway, just as a frame of reference. Not saying that that's really the size that we're targeting, but it seems like at this point, there are. If we can get interest from a grocery store, people are excited about it. So we wanted to be kind of accommodating to that specific type of use as possible.
How big, how big was the Met Market when you looked at it in Tacoma?
Those twenty-seven, twenty-nine, somewhere in there, if I remember.
That's a, that's a decent-sized grocery store.
UFC Carpenter in, at least in Boulevard Carpenter Pacific is thirty-eight four.
So again, these aren't regional retail stores. These are more of that smaller size, so wanted to kind of thread that gap a little bit. We want to be accommodating for these types of uses when and if they come at the same time. We do want to kind of put limitations on how big these structures are within these neighborhood areas. And then preschools was the other one, that preschools don't really cleanly conform to the six thousand square feet size, the way that a restaurant or something else of that style might. So maybe two potentials subcategories for grocery stores and preschools that have their own standards attached to them. Something that we saw in other districts and something that we might look at replicating some form of that here. And then for multi-commercial, so not adding residential yet, but just multiple commercial types of uses. Bumping that one, actually dropping that from forty thousand down to twenty-five thousand seems to still adequately accommodate a range of commercial uses. For example, the Wildwood or the the Briggs that were frequently referenced, those are both well within that range. And then also, instead of doing a lot coverage, doing a building coverage, which actually creates more of a dynamic space, instead of you having long kind of flat expanses along the exterior or the frontage of these buildings that they're more broken up, there's more kind of passageways through or more interaction that kind of really brings people into the district and back and forth onto the street. So it creates more, by creating smaller buildings, but moving away from that percent coverage requirement, it creates more of a dynamic space. So something in that range. And then multifamily, replicating this again, but just creating a category for multifamily, which currently doesn't exist within our neighborhood commercial districts. These two are the same in scale and looking around a range of the different kind of multifamily developments that we have within Lacey. These ranges seem to be pretty in line with purely multifamily. And then only once we get up to the mixed use of multifamily and multi-commercial, if you will, did we really see these types of numbers ever even showing up. So right now, anything that has more than one use in it is allowed to be within this range. But we really didn't see that in any of the example districts that we're looking at. Yeah, so it was hard pressed to kind of find an example of really what that looks like in practice. But maybe reserving that just for commercial and residential combined uses where there's multiple floors involved. Briefly, I will touch on height. Now we're getting closer to the end of the evening. So right now, thirty-five feet is the height limit within these neighborhood commercial districts. For reference, our moderate density residential is forty and our high-density residential is eighty. And here's where the setback, step back comes into play. So anything, yeah, anything above forty feet should have a step back. So every foot you go up, you have to go a foot back. So it's really up to the developer at that point, how many additional stories you want to add based on the amount of kind of step back that you have to accommodate by doing that. So it kind of creates this natural kind of stare appearance, if you will, which builds in privacy the higher you get with adjacent residential uses. So that's, yeah, so thirty-five feet is is really what we have within neighborhood commercial districts today. There's not a whole lot of code content beyond that, within our neighborhood commercial districts. Everything else is really reliant on our design regulations and guidelines, which talks about commercial uses next to residential uses and the kind of barriers and separation vegetation and height restrictions that go along with that. And then these are a couple, again, just examples that we pulled from other districts. Example districts that were identified through the survey that folks would like to see kind of replicated within our district. So maximum building height, three stories. So we don't really talk about stories at all, we just set that height limitation. Three stories up to a maximum of forty feet. So adding additional five feet to our thirty-five right now is kind of the the common element that we see within these other districts is kind of that sweet spot, if you will. It's not too large that it's it's kind of dominant over top of an adjacent use, but also is large enough to accommodate maybe some commercial on the ground floor and then a couple floors of residential over top.
Sorry, did not.
No, go for it.
I saw it said the fifteen-foot buffer zone vegetation. But that was something that became a massive issue for my experience when the neighbor built, they were supposed to have so many feet of vegetation. Yet the privacy was completely removed because it never specified how high the vegetation needed to be. So there was no actual vertical block. So when I had a private lot, all of a sudden I had thirteen windows peering down every inch of my my private oasis that I spent, you know, my life savings on. And so I I think that when we have stipulations about about vegetations and buffers, I think having privacy screening in in the height of of the vegetation, whether it's deciduous or evergreen. And I think that is a really, really, really important piece that's missing from our code currently when you're looking at building.
And I will say that I definitely agree. And I will say that our vegetation screening is only one of the elements that's used to address it. So there's also fence requirements. So there's vegetation and then there's a requirement for, I believe it's a six-foot fence.
Maximum is eight if you put like a slightly transparent valance. But I mean, eight feet when you're considering, you know, two or three stories going up next to a single-story home is incredibly oppressive.
And so this will be an opportunity to kind of create code that really addresses that scenario and and work in kind of defining characteristics of buildings when they do land or are constructed next to either low-density or an existing single-family home, however that phrasing makes sense to really kind of define that and spell that out. So in those instances, when they do take, that privacy is really maintained. And in other sections of our code for other types of districts, that's been addressed through a combination of vegetation requirements, fencing requirements and then windows and kind of how transparent they are. So there's a, there's a combination of tools that are at our disposal and then also the step back that kind of further creates kind of more barriers and distance between those different kind of not necessarily compatible uses. So, yeah, that's that's feedback that we're definitely looking for and and want to hear from you guys so that we can make sure that we work out into the code when we're really getting time to just write it.
Yeah, for privacy, what's really important is those upper floors and how far back they are off of the main floor or off of the lower floors. Because, you know, if you, I mean, up to forty feet, so now I've got a forty-foot wall that's full of windows, you know, right outside my backyard. You know, if you had the first floor and then your setback started much more than a foot for each foot above that height, you know, to where anybody that's in one of those upper floors, they can't see into a backyard. And that from then my backyard, that visual too is important for my feeling of security and safety.
I think too, another thing we can consider is the building placement on the lot. So, you know, is it, where is it, are these buildings going to be pushed upright? You know, like the example here, kind of the alley or the back fence line of the adjacent residential? Or is it going to be something that is going to be kind of pushed up to the street? Then we're going to have parking on the, up against the the fence, which creates its own set of issues, right? So there you get, you know, less privacy issues, maybe more light and glare and noise, you know, vehicle idling, those kinds of things. So we'll, we'll need to kind of take a look at how we, you know, how we look at some of the site design elements as well, not only kind of horizontally but vertically, like you mentioned with some of the privacy stuff.
We saw that with Panorama when we went through that whole.
That rezone process? That's right, yeah, yeah.
The sunlight, I think there's plants died and mosses has taken their place. Plants died and mosses has taken their place. It was like, yay, this all this seven light is just gone.
Yeah. So I know that that is some language that we have in some of other districts, but that's definitely something that we can borrow from and. Use within these uh our code, which really doesn't spend a whole lot of time talking about this scenario. So it it currently really relies on our design review to kind of play that role of those two different uses and how they interact. Uh but this is kind of our opportunity to add that specifically to our neighborhood commercial district and kind of take it a step further and really kind of. Visualize each one of these instances and how they work together. So. Then I think I may only have, yeah, this is really my last slide. So again, it's just kind of a summary of some of the examples that I've. Seen in those example districts, uh potential different directions to go. So um I think one of them talks about. Uh the stepped back. Yeah, so there's examples of step backs. There's examples of. Uh limitations on uh just height and different uses. So if you're gonna add. Anything above a second story, it has to be residential versus commercial or there's really other a lot of different opportunities here as far as. How we wanna define these spaces and what uses are allowed and and what those interactions with neighborhood. Uh residential uses are. Uh but yeah, mostly I just wanted to kind of share uh. The kind of details that we've found from other districts and then hopefully get your guys' feedback on. What seems to make sense? What do you wanna hear more about? You know, what kind of concerns or issues are coming to mind that. That definitely need to be addressed specifically within our neighborhood commercial districts instead of relying on our design regulations to kind of address those or. Any instances that are really unique to neighborhood commercial districts that that might be missed if we're reliant on other. Other design regulations to kind of enforce them.
I mean, you might, for me personally, you know, the first time I experienced a really, really well done. I guess neighborhood commercial was uh downtown Las Vegas. Uh which is south of the strip. Are you familiar with it?
Uh I'm just imagining saying Las Vegas in in a Lacy context. I'm definitely going to go there with you, but.
A development, but it was developed like an old fashioned downtown. We had the on-street parking, the wider sidewalks, the low-scale buildings. And so the next time I experienced something like that, this is very comfort, right, is Seabrook. I think the scale of that, the scale of the buildings, the feel of it, the vibe, those. Are what I imagine as being kind of a neighborhood commercial type development.
I think the height is really.
From Las Vegas to Seabrook.
Honestly, I mean, it's not like the strip. It's 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 uh it is called the Vegas Town Center, might be called the Vegas Town Center. It's south of the strip and it's just a really cool development.
Sounds like a city uh field trip there. But I think the height is. The height is a big issue, but I think it's also relative to the space. So if you're adjust a a budding uh. Single-story homes, then you know forty feet is gonna be monstrous. But if you maybe have two or three-story homes like. Like townhouses, and I think that's some of the reason like Briggs can get away with a little extra height is because you're next to some townhouses and you're. A full street of moved, removed from single-family homes, but they're all two-story, single-family homes. So the scale is not so. Such in such stark contrast. So I think, and I don't know how you write that into the code, but that to me is the issue. You were faced with probably a single-story home against three stories. But you know, maybe if you were a. Narrow three-story row house, that wouldn't have felt quite as. As much of an alarming thing. You would have still had your little rooftop terrace and you would have still got your son kind of, but.
It's the the contrast living in Texas where it's four, five, six, seven stories consistently. It just felt like normal. It was nice to have the the big buildings and have that density and community and. You had all the stores, you know, at the lower levels and no parking. But uh. It even with the, is it the road downtown, how the parking was all underneath? It's really an isolated that that's constructed and integrated. You don't really feel that downtown Olympia. Is it those, what is it like four, four or five stories downtown? You don't really notice it because it's such a steady flow. It's it's not a a sea of single-story houses. And then megaliths in the middle of the street, so.
And I'm not sure who just said it, but the adjacent to and so when there's a street that separates it from that single family versus when you're. Sharing a property line, uh that's, there's definitely examples of that uh as far as code examples that we can pull from. Cause I think, yeah, to your point, uh the experience when you're sharing that property line versus when you're across the street or if it's a two-story or a three-story. So really, when it comes to, I think, single-family homes specifically. Is really where that kind of the the like polar extremes of that really takes place and is really kind of something that we wanna pay attention to. Uh when these districts lands next to single-family homes specifically, so we wanna make sure that we're not changing the experience of those homes. I think that there's a little bit more room to play when we're talking about moderate or high-density next to these districts that already have those height allowances, so.
Give a whole gas station all over again if you do that, so.
Yeah, I think of something like great floors. That just scares me.
Yeah.
That that kind of scale. It's like, it's like, you know, I'm over Jubilee. If you step one of those warehouses right next to Jubilee, oh my god, you know, it would just be a monster.
Kind of wild seeing what the current square footage is actually what that building looks like. And and just kind of in practice. So yeah, I think. One of the early takeaways is that we need to kind of dial back that scale or at least make it uh. Multi-story or if you're talking about a single-story uh building, single story, commercial building even. To have something that's of that size just doesn't fit with news districts, so.
But then you could, I could see uh twenty-five thousand square foot. Met market. On the right lot, not even, cause the backside. What I would think would be the backside would be against any homes and there's no windows in the backs of those, those things. And so. Then the question goes, can they see the rooftop? And you say, how can they screen some of the ugliness of a rooftop? You know, like air conditioning units or whatever. And there's ways, obviously, there's ways to do that. But yeah, I mean. Boy. I'm just glad we don't have a lot of them in Lacy.
And and sometimes I think it makes it easier when the commercial is the first thing to develop. People. You know, and the the residential comes later on the other side of the fence. Because the people that move into those residential areas have the knowledge and the understanding, hey, I'm purchasing this with eyes wide open, knowing that there's. You know, a commercial enterprise on the other side of my fence. The hard thing is when the the commercial is the last thing to fill up and that's usually. At least with the remaining sites that we have, kind of what happens. And then people come unglued that those things are developing.
Well, how long was the mushroom farm there?
Uh sixty years?
Been there forever, right? Kind of in our minds, right? And then everything built up right next to it.
Right.
And they complained about the. Like, it's a mushroom farm, folks. Didn't you, didn't you ever go by there during the day?
You know, once when they had the off gas, it wasn't that bad consistently.
Yeah.
I live over that direction. It was, I knew it going in.
Right now, uh city council's hearing about the rail crossing there at uh, what's the name of that street? Patterson Lake.
All of them, alright. The one where they crash, they crash into it all the time.
No, that's bull. No, 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 but but the neighbors there moved in full knowledge, the rail crossing was there, right? And and now they're saying, oh, this needs to be a quiet zone. This is not the council turn, it's it's the county.
Ovations. Is it an ovation neighborhood?
No, it's the old neighborhood. It's a, you go down uh the Carpenter Extension, it's across from Interlake Grocery. And thing is, it's a, it told me, every single one of those property deeds. Has bold letters. These trains are gonna give off noise and you have the potential for sixty to a hundred trains a day. They go into it eyes wide open. But then they get in there and they go, no.
Move your truck.
Airports are the same way.
Oh, yeah.
I think another reason to scale it down too is I, you know, you put a, you know, Ralph's. Grocery store in there and I think you've got deliveries probably twenty-four hours a day, those kinds of things. So I I don't think anybody's envisioning. A huge full-service, you know, Safeway, Thriftway equivalent kind of thing. What they're looking for is maybe a Spuds. Or something like that, because you, I don't think you wanna live next to a full-service grocery store and all that. You know, there's stocking shelves at two in the morning sometimes and that means trucks and deliveries and.
I hear trucks. I live in Jubilee and I'm, I have got a huge buffer, you know, tree buffer zone between us and the warehouse. I hear trucks in the middle of the lane.
Yeah.
I live right at the edge of Midtown and it's pretty much silent. I have one neighbor who does like concerts on Sundays, but. It's it's such a quiet neighborhood and we're right in the middle of everything. It's uh, it's amazing. I I.
And when I first moved in, I couldn't hear the freeway. I couldn't hear the trains. I, now I hear trains. Freeway constantly that um of the freeway and all those warehouses. There's so many more than in the last fifteen years. But you're right. I knew they were gonna be there. Did I know there was gonna be that much noise? Probably didn't think there'd be that much noise, but.
The next person that moves in is going to.
Be fully parked.
Be full, yeah, yeah. So keep that in mind too, that we all have our points of reference, right?
Yeah, right.
So, and that's also part of, you know, living in a growing community and living in in a city and, you know, there's. Things like light and noise and glare and all those things that come with it. So, you know, we have to do what we can through our code. We're not gonna be able to. You know, solve this. We're not gonna have any kind of magic wand that we'll be able to solve this issue with, but there. Are certainly things, tools in our toolbox that we can use. One of the things I think that you'll probably see in the draft code, Daphne, is some limitations on hours of hours of operation. Too.
Yeah.
Um because that'll, that'll help with, you know, anything that wants to be open twenty-four hours.
Do you have a timeframe for this process?
Yeah, so right now we're looking at kind of the scale of the buildings. Uh the other components of this chapter include allowed users. So what to do with things like gas stations, um which is gonna be fun. Um but yeah, so I think we.
We're coming back at the next meeting for another briefing.
So I think that next meeting is going to include a list of allowed users, but I think the majority of what we're gonna be doing. Moving forward for this district is to focus more on the design elements of it. Uh we're gonna be a little bit looser and not try to list every single potential use that's out there. Uh but kind of create higher kind of umbrella categories, if you will, that a lot of uses are in. And then spend more of our time focusing on the scale of these sites and the design requirements of these. Things like awnings and setbacks and open space and things like that, so that even if it's not maybe the most desirable use that somebody is excited about, at least. The feel of it is of a scale that still is comfortable within these districts.
So with that being said, you said scale it down or whatever, is it better to not make up a list? I mean, you can make up an exclusion list that you know for sure, right? But not make up a list that then allows you or the hearing examiner. To have more flexibility, because it sounded to me through this last. For the process in Awolamit, that the hearing examiner had few options.
So we wanna get a, get rid of conditional use per, conditional uses altogether. Nothing needs to go to the hearing examiner. It's either allowed or it's not. And then. You know, really like onset focus on those, those, you know, elements of the building and site design that really are gonna, you know, be. So for example, like maybe, I I think one of the things we'll have to address directly is gas stations, but think of maybe another use that. That is like a a fast food restaurant with a drive-through, right? Uh we may not say that that's allowed or prohibited, but what we'll say is restaurants are allowed, but the design has to fit this template. So that means buil- buildings in this place, you know, that kind of thing. So it it may be hard for a a. Fast food restaurant with a drive-through to meet that that template. So it's almost using a.
Also because it's the Burger King, you have to smell his hamburgers.
Yeah. So it's almost like a form-based code light kind of approach where it's more, you know, re- reliant on. Kind of the building design, the site design, those kinds of things than it is on the laundry list of uses, because. The laundry list of uses, it's, it gets, it's hard to administer as staff, because it's like, well, you know, maybe you have something that is. Um you know, it says this type of retail establishment is allowed. Uh let's just say it's a, you know, a hat shop. Um but you know, this is, this is a shop that's selling clothing. Well, clothing shops aren't on the list. What do you do? Well, it's similar to a hat shop, so we'll allow it, right? So you get into this really kind of like the minutia of the code details that you, that aren't, that's not very helpful. You, what you want is. Instead of hat shops or clothing shops, retail is allowed, right? So getting to those broader categories that can stand the test of time, not having to worry about. You know, if if uh videotapes or videotape rental stores. Should be on the list or not. So that's really why I think the the approach that we're always gonna recommend initially to, you know, get us where where we need to be.
Well, and I think that makes sense, because develop, the way development works, developers get an idea in their head according to what. Contemporary desires are, right? And then they go shopping for a land price. And a zoning code that matches that concept. And it can be really, really hard for them to find that.
Yeah, so we we don't, we're just gonna wait. You're more coming at us.
That's right.
Yep.
Another briefing in a, in a month.
Alrighty. Okay. Let's move on to communication and announcements. Not really much, other than next, our next meeting is December fifth. We do not have a meeting. The week of Thanksgiving. And December fifth, we'll have a, there'll be a public hearing. And more from Hans apparently.
Who probably should be sending out.
Then we'll also be doing the amendments to the um planning commission bylaws to formally update your meeting dates to the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. Starting after the first of the year. Yeah, the second.
You didn't get your Monday, huh?
I'll still get a chance to go know that. Alrighty.
What are we, what is the outreach for the public hearing for next week, any, or next meet December fifth?
Cap facilities plan?
Yeah.
Uh we're gonna put it on the website, do the typical uh Facebook posts and that kind of stuff. So, you know, we did the Children's Day event. And um we didn't get a lot of just kind of like general citizens that are too interested in the.
Knowing what's happening to the Public Works Department, they don't, they don't care.
Yeah.
On the water, what do you call this? The water bill that has the calendar?
Oh, yeah, the.
The water bill that has the calendar.
Lacy Life.
Yeah, we could, we can definitely use those broader, you know, things. I think um. You know, it's just we, we haven't been able to, people aren't too enthralled in how City Hall is gonna. Redevelop or, you know.
It will be if their taxes go up though, so it'll come.
Yeah, well, the way the strategy was maybe. If the council takes from what they have in surplus, whatever that means that is. And and the grant money, not from grand, but. He had a red jump. You know, it might not have a huge impact.
Right, right. So there's, there's a whole funding strategy part that they didn't even go into tonight that's been worked through with the council that kind of shows. You know, based on how much reserves we use, then it's kind of like the down payment for your house, right? The bigger down payment you make, the less payments you have to make over time in a. High interest rate environment. They've worked all that out to kind of figure out the best strategies to do that. The, what they mentioned was in January, the council will be working with the city manager in a retreat to kind of figure out what. What is available to be able to dedicate towards the, you know, like future capital projects.
Do they ever do anything crazy like in, you know, citizens invest in your city, buy a, buy a bond for city? Do they do those kind of things anymore?
Buy a brick with your name on it or something.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, like, you know, maybe they're.
Well, I mean, absolutely, absolutely, we do, you know, we do bonds. We don't do the, you know, that we're, they're just sold on the open market. They're, you know, they're not, there's no uh advertising campaign associated with. Maybe we get back into that, huh?
I just think it would be interesting to invest in in my city.
You can do that.
Yeah, you can do it. You buy them on the secondary.
I am, I live here. I invest.
But yeah, you just buy them on the secondary market.
Yeah.
They might not get excited about public works, but animal services sure sure get some people because people love their animals.
All you have to do is show a video to people in Thurston County of that animal.
And they'll be like, where do I write my check?
Yeah, like, oh my god.
Yeah.
The city of Lacey will pay you back for your bonds. We have some kind of like the, one of the highest bond ratings in the state, like there's like six or seven, eight. Six or seven, eight cities that have like the triple A highest bond rating and at Lacey it's one.
That's because we've got the amazing toy.
Yeah, healthy reserves.
Okay, well, with that, our next meeting, remember, is December fifth. Everybody have a wonderful. However you want to celebrate Thanksgiving.
I thought you were gonna say election day.
It is election day and still, if you haven't, look, we've all here, we're doing away now.
You have to better have voted already.
Okay, where's your?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, me too.
Sorry, Jack, you gotta go home, get to start working on the honeydew list.
Uh no, I'm gonna, yeah, probably enjoy a little bourbon. Because it has been an extremely long day.
This is my, I had school, a meeting, physical. A meeting and I was supposed to go to another event, but. It ends in fifty minutes, so.
Thanks for coming in, Ron.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Sorry, you have to do it again.
I mean, I look forward to it.
You look more relaxed when you're at home, though.
Am I home?
You're relaxing.